Things in order?
Everything is in order.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve PB 2000 dash forty-eight. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to sign the covenant and release now?
Yes.
Need a back pen?
If black would be great.
I might put a two.
Anybody have a black pen? I can borrow.
Anybody get a black pen?
I have a black pen.
There you go, Mary.
Probably stole it from government someplace.
No, don't look for it.
It's not an old state one. Sorry. We used to have the state pens.
And the next item that we'll take out of order is PB 2013 dash oh-six. Covenant release. Ally?
So this is basically the same as the one before, except this is on Rafter Road. It contains four lots and it's in the six Hans district. Their request is for a full covenant release. Our engineering department went out, looked at the site and also the plans, and they agreed that everything has been completed. So they have recommended a release of the covenant as well, and that's my recommendation.
Move to release the covenant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion from the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Henry, we need the black pen back.
I passed it back.
Oh, here it is.
Do this in order.
It won't complicate it. Merry Christmas.
Can we have the pen?
No.
That's mine.
Oh, it is?
Yes, it is.
I thought it was Mary's.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It is six thirty-eight. This is a continued public hearing, PB 2017 dash twenty-five. David Birdsley, Herring Realty Trust as the owner, and Jim Brady, engineer and land surveyor, as representative, seek approval of a rescission plan pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one W. The proposal seeks to rescind the recorded subdivision plan for Winslow G. Rulaman's Plan Book two fifty, page twenty-seven, being lots one through three, parcel A and A Way and the Way, in favor of a two-lot approval not required A and R division plan. The property is known as Sacro Tucket Drive, map fifteen, in the RL zoning district. Ally?
So the last time we saw this, we had questions about the rescission as well as the A and R on the same plan. We met with Mr. Revere as well as Mr. Brady to kind of review what should be done going forward. I know Attorney Revere has done some research with the Registry of Deeds, so I'm sure he'd be happy to go through that with the board. But this plan that's in front of you that was submitted today, that was submitted today to us, does not include the A and R. It just is the outline of the original lot without it being divided like it was the first time in nineteen seventy-one.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of that plan?
Yep, I just handed it out to everyone.
Wait a minute.
It's a larger plan. Okay, here's yours.
Thank you.
I'll just open one.
Okay. First, are there any questions for any members of the board? Go right ahead.
Okay. Paul Revere for the applicant, which is the Herring Realty Trust. We looked at this plan. It's part of a long-term settlement of a long, ongoing dispute, and we're attempting to work this out through two-step plan. The first thing to do is to take this old nineteen seventy-one subdivision, which has a road that would start over next to Brax Landing, cross what's called Carding Machine Brook, and end up onto our property, and had three lots on it. Well, this, we're asking the board to vote to rescind that plan. Okay? So what, instead of having three lots with a road, we will only have one large, single lot? And I say, we're rescinding the road. The road is actually only on our property, not on the Brax Landing property on the north side. That is just an easement of way on there. So we end up with a single plot of land, and at the last meeting, it was confusing because we had overlaid two plans on top of it, and we wanted to do this approval not required. Some of the issues came up is exactly how the registry would like to see this done, and secondarily, whether the board should be acting on an approval-not-required plan when the subdivision has not been rescinded and the twenty-day appeal period has not ended. So after meeting with Ms. Sabatino and her successor, we decided on our program to put right in front, let's just rescind the plan. Get that. Make this one lot. Go through the twenty-day period, submit the A and R later. That will be secondary. It shouldn't matter. Keep it simple. Now, one of the things that we've talked about is the language, and I actually have a little handout here that I asked Ally to read over, that I didn't make it more confusing than it was, to try to figure out what exactly is meant by some terribly drafted language in Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one W, which says, what do you have to do to rescind the plan? So I'm gonna approach and give you a handout. I have to keep one copy for myself to follow, and we'll go six, which means I'm one short.
We'll read over each other's shoulder.
Don't worry about it.
Although, I laughed because Mr. Joyce is here, and I don't know if he recalls years ago emailing with me, I think it was the same Jim Joyce?
Probably.
Who worked with my college roommate, Al Paperny?
Yes.
Yes. And you were Owens Corning at the time?
Illinois.
Illinois. Owens, Illinois. Sorry, I just looked at my emails real quick.
In any event, but this is a little outline of this terrible language.
I remember him.
Make sure the lawyers each have one. I forget Paul Revere.
He thought maybe everybody did smile and said, how can he free them?
Here, we can share.
Do you want to keep one?
If you look at what I sent you, or handed you here, it starts out with a language, and I'm just gonna read it real quickly. The "No modification or amendment, rescission of the approval plan under this section shall take effect until, one, the plan as originally approved or a copy thereof, and a certified copy of the vote of the planning board making such modification, amendment, rescission, or change, any additional plan referred to in such vote have been recorded." That's clause one. It's terribly written. "Two, an endorsement has been made on the plan originally approved as recorded referring to such vote and where it is recorded. And, three, such vote is indexed in the grantor index under the names of the owners of record of the land affected." Now, you can read that ten times, and it goes twenty different ways. I broke it into each of the clauses. The first clause one, and this I went over with Mr. Mead this afternoon, "The plan as originally approved or a copy thereof, and a certified copy of the vote of the planning board making such modification, amendment, or rescission, or change, or additional plan referred to in such vote shall have been recorded." If you look at my paragraph A underneath that, Jack said to me, "The plan is originally approved, has been recorded, they are happy that you can do this, the nineteen seventy-one Sacro Tucket Drive plan has been recorded in Plan Book two fifty, page twenty-seven." That meets the beginning requirements of clause one, that the plan has been recorded. The second part, which I have in B, is it says there that there has to be a certified copy of the vote of the planning board making such modification or rescission to be recorded. This is, and I don't know if Ally prepared a draft document, but will be a decision document that you will sign on the vote, assuming you approve the rescission, tonight. It then goes to the town clerk, and twenty days goes by, and that certified copy is then able to be recorded.
So just for clarification with that, if the board votes to approve the rescission, we do a decision, but not the same night. We do it later, and then the chairman comes and signs the plan, and then it goes to the town clerk.
Right.
That's where that comes in.
So of the three clauses that have to be done, our first clause, part A of clause one, is done already because the nineteen seventy-one plan has been recorded. Because, as Mr. Mead interprets this, you know, he's saying, well, if the original plan has never been recorded, it's gotta get recorded at some point. Well, it has been recorded, so that's taken care of, and then the decision document. Clause two says, "An endorsement has been made on the plan originally approved as recorded referring to such vote and where it is recorded." And we went over this left and right. Do we need to resubmit a copy on a Mylar of the nineteen seventy-one plan for the planning board to sign? Ally, I, and Tim Brady talked about this, so I went over to Jack Mead, and Jack says, no, 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 I do not want to see that old plan with something written on top of it. When you record this, the endorsement has been made on the original plan approved and recorded, referring to such vote and where it is recorded. He says, when I get the certified vote from you, which is up in the first clause, we will then go, and we will put a marginal reference, which if you will get recording documents, it's handwritten on the side, that says, this plan is rescinded, and refer to the recording of the certified vote in there. So the Registry of Deeds will make the endorsement on the old plan when we come to record these planning documents. Okay? When we record the rescission of the plan, they're gonna go, the certified vote, they're gonna pull out the nineteen seventy-one plan, they're gonna re-scan it, re-copy it in their records, and it's gonna permanently say, this plan has been rescinded. Okay? The third part is, clause three is, such vote is indexed in the grantor index under the names of the owners of record of the land affected. That again is something the registry does. They record the grantor index, and that will be done at recording. Okay? And that is my description of clause three. The last thing is, we're submitting this, I'll call it a perimeter plan. Okay? And Jack was very happy that we were doing this, is that plan that we've given you to sign is an approval-required plan, not an A and R plan, even though it looks like a perimeter plan. And it says on it, this is rescinding the plan. And if we go back up to clause one, subsection discussion B, it says that the decision document will refer to the original plan and any other plan in the vote. Your vote will refer to this plan in it, so that the rescission document that's recorded will say, this was the nineteen seventy-one plan, it has been rescinded by our action on X date, and our action on X date results in this new plan being recorded. And the nineteen seventy-one plan, the registry will pull out, write in the marginal references to the rescission and to the new plan, and we'll have a completed whole. And that's how Mr. Mead said he would like it to be done, and that's what we've attempted to do here tonight.
I'll start with Mr. McFarland.
The prior plan that you talked about, that's the one that had the bridge?
Well, it actually doesn't have a bridge, but it's the roadway that comes across the bridge.
It had a bridge over onto, and somebody objected.
Well, no, it was...
It was a right-of-way that could have been a bridge, had a bridge been approved.
Correct. In fact, there had been, as I think we said at the prior meeting, there actually once was a culvert approved in nineteen seventy-three or so for this area, but there has never been any bridge approved to get across. But that, it's the old plan.
Okay. Next question is that the last plan you gave to us, I think involved some transfer of land with Mrs. Tanko?
Correct.
Now, you're not doing that this time around.
Just so we're clear on this.
I'm not trying to tell you that.
We're still trying to do the deal with Ms. Tanko, who's behind me here. Okay? If you recognize her. But that requires...
I didn't recognize her because she changed her hair.
That plan will require us to do an approval-not-required plan, to divide...
So you'll do that in the future?
That's gonna be done in the future. So we're going to stepwise, because in our discussions, and I think the board had issues with, how do we sign an approval-not-required plan dividing a lot when we don't know whether the rescission has gotten through its twenty-day appeal period? So the approval-not-required plan will get submitted and possibly signed, assuming we get past the twenty-day period.
Jim?
Okay. I actually just wanted to thank you for going to the registry and talking with the registrar and clarifying this issue for us, because you remember from the last time you were here, I think we were a little bit confused as to how to proceed, and you have now enlightened us as to the way to proceed. So thank you for that.
Yeah. In fact, I did go to the registrar before, but Jack was on vacation at the time.
Well, now you've got the real story. Thank you.
Okay. And before we get to Mary, I wouldn't like to be the attorney that has to clear this title in fifty years.
I think it's fine.
Okay, Mary?
I know the title from eighteen seventy forward, and you don't even want to know that part, because there are deeds from, what is it, eighteen eighty-eight that are recorded in nineteen seventy-three.
Don't complicate us anymore.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mary has, I think.
Mary?
Nope, I have no questions. I think we discussed at the last meeting, the vote versus a plan.
This is a public hearing, so is there any questions from the audience? No lawyer wants to stand up and ask a question? No questions for the audience? That being the case.
Move to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the rescission pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one W of the Winslow C. Rulaman's Plan, as recorded in Plan Book two fifty, page twenty-seven, approved by the Howard's Planning Board on August third, nineteen seventy-one, and shown on the plan entitled, quote, "Plan of Land State Highway Route Twenty-eight, Howard's, Mass, as prepared by Timothy J. Brady, Land Surveyor, dated September twenty-first, two thousand seventeen."
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Yes.
I'm Charlene Greenhenge. I'm gonna be your new interim town planner. Just a point of clarification, if there is a new revision date on the plan, that should be referenced, as well as the September twenty-first, because I'm the one who has to write the decision, so I want to make sure it's correct.
We will amend that motion to read the plan dated December twelfth, two thousand seventeen.
It should be September twenty-first and revised.
Last revised.
Last revised.
December twelfth.
December twelfth.
Okay.
Thank you.
I accept the amendment.
I just have a question, Mr. Chairman, because the plan, as I read it, as before, it doesn't say it was revised. It indicates that the date of the plan is December twelfth, as opposed to it being dated September and then revised December twelfth. So I think just...
December twelfth.
I think from the substance of our vote, it doesn't make any difference, but I'm just, from the technicality, I think as opposed to having it revised December twelfth, the vote should be dated December twelfth.
I accept the amendment.
There's no date on this, so it's the December twelfth plan.
And I will, did I second the motion, Ally?
You did.
And then I accept the amendment to the motion, as the one we seconded it.
First, yeah, well, then we will first vote on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. I don't think we need to vote on the original. It's been amended, so we approve.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to sign the map now or at the end? No? Never mind.
It's the twenty-one day period. Twenty-day appeal period, so...
Never mind.
Thank you, members.
Have you did that? Merry Christmas. Next. Next item on the agenda. PB two thousand seventeen dash thirty, Paul and Michelle Vassil, as owners, care of William D. Crowe, Escalaia representative, seeks approval to amend a special use permit with waivers for an accessory structure with bedrooms pursuant to the Code of Herwich, three twenty-five dash thirteen through three twenty-five, attachment one, paragraph one, line one B, and section three twenty-five dash fifty-one, as set forth in Mass General Law, forty A, section nine. The proposal seeks to construct a detached, single-story structure in lieu of a previously granted special permit for two-story structure under case PB two thousand seventeen dash fourteen on May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. The property is located at Nineteen Schoolhouse Road, map fourteen, parcel T seven A, in the RL zoning district. Ally?
Thank you very much. So this application came before you. The accessory structure with bedrooms looked a little bit different, and I'm sure that the applicant can explain the differences before, but they're still requesting accessory structure with bedrooms. We sent it out, the application out to different boards, departments, and committees. The only concern that was noted was from the Health Department, and it was, if you consider attached memo, and I'm recommending this be a condition of approval if the board agrees. So it basically says that the septic system was designed to support the structure with the condition that one of the bedrooms in the main house is to be deconmissioned. A building permit to remove the wall of one of the bedrooms on the first floor and open it to the hallway to create a den is required. This work must be completed prior to occupancy of the accessory structure. So that was required from the Health Department. I'm sure the applicant was aware of that. I just recommend that, if the board wants to approve this, that should be a condition. Other than that, I see no problem with this application and recommend approval.
Okay. Counselor?
Just before we go to the applicant's presentation, I just wanted to make a brief clarification, to make sure that we're all on the same page. In the staff report that went to the board, it indicated that the applicant seeks to construct a detached, two-story structure.
All right, you're right. That is a clarification. It's not a two-story. It's a one-story.
So I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear about it for one story.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay. Well, we're on that subject, in that same par...
I think it's because I took it from the last one. That's probably why.
In sub-paragraph five of that description?
Yep, description.
All right. The not prepared by Entor Design. They're by Frank C. Umbrello.
Okay. Who can make that change? Because it will be in the decision.
The date is correct. It's just who drafted it.
Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. I was gonna point that out also. Because we were here, this is Paul Vassal here, seated to my right, and I'm Attorney William Crowe from Howard's Court, and we were here last May to have the detached accessory structure with bedrooms approved by this board, which you did unanimously, and a special permit decision number two thousand seventeen dash fourteen was issued and recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Mr. Vassal did not construct that structure, and as you know, the special permit's good for two years, so he's decided to modify it and go from a two-story to a one-story detached structure, and it's a little bit wider, squashed down a little bit, a little bit wider and longer, twenty-six feet by forty-two feet, as shown on the Moran Plan dated September seventh, two thousand seventeen, that I submitted. The floor layout and the elevations are shown on the Chambrello Plans dated October ninth, two thousand seventeen, that I submitted also. So it's a detached accessory residential structure with bedrooms, as shown on the plan, and Mr. Vassal has no problems with the same findings as last time, the condition that it's not an accessory apartment and it does not have a kitchen. And we would ask that you amend the decision, the previous decision accordingly, to approve the structure as shown on the certified pot plan and on the revised elevation plans. Thank you.
Any questions on the board?
Simple question. Why'd you go, why'd you change the structure?
Very good question. Thank you.
It won't affect my vote from here. I just want...
No, no, no. When we were doing this last March, or whenever it was, before we started renovation on the main house, I used one of the plans from Mr. Chambrello that I had for another property to try to save some time and money, and which is the plan that was approved. And then I was standing back in the parking lot one day and realized that the house is kind of at the main house, even though it's two stories, is lower than your normal two-story house, and it gives the privacy even with the second floor, with the way the fence is. And I said, you know, to have a two-story structure coming out of that yard is gonna look kind of lonely out there, right? So, and then the roofline of this thing matches the house that's there, which I think is kind of aesthetically pleasing when you're on the grounds. So that's why I did it.
And my other question is, as you face the property, to the right of...
The driveway?
No, to the right of this, over here to the right.
Yes.
Who owns that?
The Timeshare Hotel. That's the back of the property, where the swimming pool is. Their swimming pool.
Oh. Okay. I drove by there three or four times and kept looking, and I had this thing in front of me, and now I know what you're talking about. And thank you.
And to the left is the Pleasant Street, the backside of Pleasant Street houses.
I understand.
Same square footage, roughly?
It's less total square footage, but the footprint is bigger. It's less total square footage, but the footprint is bigger.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? There are no questions from the public and no further questions from the board? Joe?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed at 7:05.
Move to adopt the following findings of fact. One, the use is consistent with the zoning code and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Two, the site is an appropriate location for such use. Three, accessory structure will not contain a kitchen and is not an accessory apartment as described in Paragraph 352-2, word usage and definition, dwelling, single-family with accessory apartment. Four, the proposed parking area will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements of the Town Code, and as such, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, we...
Move to approve with conditions, the use special permit and waivers requested for the attached accessory structure with bedrooms, based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, with the above findings and following conditions. One, the accessory structure is not an accessory apartment pursuant to 325-2, word usage and definitions, dwelling, single-family with accessory apartment, and shall not contain a kitchen. Two, the owner must comply with the Health Department memo dated November 21, 2017. Three, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And four, any change to the plan shall be subject to the further planning review.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, before you vote... The referred-to Health Board memorandum reads as follows, "To the Planning Board from Megan Eldridge, Health Director, dated November 21, 2017, request for departmental input for case PB 2017-30. Case 2017-30, Vassal, 19 Schoolhouse Road. I have reviewed the application for a special permit for an accessory structure with bedrooms at 19 Schoolhouse Road. The septic system was designed to support this structure with the condition that one of the bedrooms in the main house is to be decommissioned. A building permit to remove the wall of one of the bedrooms on the first floor and open it to the hallway to create a den is required. This work must be completed prior to occupancy of the accessory structure. Should you require further information, please do not hesitate to contact." I thought that should be part of the record, Mr. Chairman.
So it's been moved and seconded? Any further discussion? Hearing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you again. Thank you again.
The next item on the agenda. PB 2017-28, Christine X., is that right? As owner, applicant seeks approval of a special, or use special permit for an accessory apartment pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section 325... Come right up and sit at the table and relax. Section 325-51H and Article 5 is set forth in Mass. General Law 40A, Section 9. The proposal seeks to convert the finished space above a garage into a one-bedroom apartment. The property is located at 19 Squanton Path, Map 78, Parcel A25, in the R.R. and W.R. zoning district. Did I say your name correctly? Okay, good. Ellie?
So this request is for an accessory apartment, it's located above the garage, in the garage. My recommendation is to approve the application. I just want to review with you the recommendations from other boards. So Conservation Department, no concerns. The Health Department did have an attached memo, kind of just like the last one that I reviewed. So it talks about the septic system was designed to support this fourth bedroom as a part of the dwelling. However, creating accessory apartment changes the use from a single-family home to a multifamily home and requires a change in the system. Title 5 requires two septic tanks in series or a two-compartment tank when serving anything other than a single-family home. So basically, you have to just go to the Health Department and make sure you meet the Title 5 requirements, and I'm recommending that also be put in as a condition of our approval tonight, if the board agrees. Other than that, it meets all the requirements.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Yeah?
Yes. Mr. Chairman and Ellie, based on the staff that we sent out, the applicant is also requesting a waiver. Because, am I reading the right one?
I'm seeing the section.
The applicant is seeking waiver and/or modifications from commercial and residential requirements of the rules and regulations that is required for a submittal. Could you just explain that to us, please?
Yeah, so that's normally what we do for accessory apartments, because when they submit an application, there's lots of different requirements, but it's more for the higher-level commercial review, and this is just, you know, a residential review in essence. So we just request that those things that don't, aren't required in these kind of applications to be waived. And it's just consistent with what we normally do for these.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Is this already done, or you just want to, you want to make it legal, or you're going to do it?
It's already, it was there when I bought the house. It was already done, yeah.
Okay.
Is it just one large unfinished space now?
No, it's not, because the gentleman that built the house, they lived up there while he built the rest of the place, so...
I saw this, but I didn't know if this is what you planned to do, or if it's existing.
No, it's existing.
Thank you.
Okay, other, that being the case, are there any questions from the public? Step right up. Could you tell us where you are?
Good afternoon. My name is Rebecca Segura, and I live at 15 Squanton Path, which is directly next door to 19 Squanton Path. My concern, this apartment is existing. My concern with making it legal is that, as much as we live in single fam, you know, they're large lots, single-family home dwellings, turning this into a multifamily unit would change the dynamic of the neighborhood, and my concern is that I would, as much as I would love to see the apartment go there, I want to make sure, or I would like to request or ask if there's any possibilities that we could, that it's a long-term rental versus, you know, Airbnb's going in every single weekend or something along those lines, so that we keep the neighborhood down to its normal residential traffic. And I don't know if there's any concerns.
I, I think, I'll try to answer that, and if anybody wants to jump in, feel free. It's relatively difficult to legislate that. The philosophy behind the accessory apartment was to make units that are affordable to people on a longer-term basis, certainly not, I don't think the weekends, although I don't know for sure. It seems like, to me, like it's kind of a pain in the neck to change the sheets every two nights, but I don't think we can legislate that. The idea behind it was to try to create more housing that's useful to people in town that are just starting out that's more affordable.
Absolutely, and I'm 100% backing of that, and that's what I would like to see this being used for versus the alternative.
You're right, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's important for you to understand, it's not like this sits on a 10,000-square-foot lot. This property is an acre, isn't that correct?
Almost.
Yeah. Because I, I thought about what you just said when I, and so I went and looked, and I therefore don't have a problem with it. If it was, and by the way, we have a lot of, over the years, have had a lot of these down toward the waterfront, down on the other side of 28. I know this is, and I know where this is, but, so, I really don't think we can restrict it any on a piece of land this big. If it was sitting on a small lot, I understand your position, and I might think differently, but I, I don't think we can restrict it on a lot this size.
I think so, and I, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, yeah, I think the sort of short-term answer to your question is that, from what I can see here, this is consistent with the current zoning ordinance. The current zoning ordinance does not put any of the type of restrictions on accessory apartments that you are talking about. Therefore, the process of dealing with that type of issue would be through a revision to the total zoning ordinance, which requires an extensive process going through this board and eventually being voted on by town meeting. So the fact that this is consistent with the current zoning, there, as Joe had mentioned, thus the issue that you brought up is not an issue that we can deal with at this time.
Perfect. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, too, I am reading the section of code, which is what's allowed to be in the accessory apartment, what's not. And so basically, you can't rent out both at the same time, so you can't rent out the principal structure and the accessory structure at the same time, only one can be rented out. I know that doesn't have to do with Airbnb, so just so you know, they both can't be rented out at the same time, someone has to be living there full-time.
Perfect. Thanks.
Other, any other questions? Step right up.
Yeah, I just have, just a clarification on what you just said there. So that means that the, that the owner of the property has to reside in one of those apartments?
Full-time.
Right. Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing no further questions? Mr. McFarlane?
Sorry? Before I make a motion...
Oh, we better close the public hearing.
Make a motion, close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, once again, prior to making the motion, we have information from Ms. Eldridge, the Health Director, tells us that she's reviewed the application for an accessory apartment at 19 Squanton Path. Septic system was designed to support this fourth bedroom as part of the dwelling. However, creating an accessory apartment changes the use from a single-family home to a multifamily home and requires a change in the system. Title 5 requires two septic tanks in series or two-compartment tanks when serving anything other than a single-family home. A disposal system construction permit is required to make this change to the septic system. And I see in front of us a document, proposed septic design from Tedco Environmental Consultants. Are you in the process of...
No, that must be the old one. I am not in, I just found out that I would have to do that. I haven't even explored it yet, getting the septic done, so...
Okay.
I think we should make that a part of the finding, don't you? Yeah?
Okay.
It, it's okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, I move the following findings of fact, vote to adopt the following findings of fact. One, the parcel is in the R-L. Two, the apartment unit is not greater than 900 square feet, being 672 plus or minus square feet. Three, it is the owner's intent to occupy one unit. Four, minimum requirements have met for setbacks, area, and bulk. Five, the driveway will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements. And six, the application is submitted, as submitted, does not adversely affect local traffic or create traffic hazards.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
The only discussion is that we also have to vote on a waiver, and my only question to you, Mr. Chairman, is should we vote on the waiver first, or do you want to vote on the findings and the special, the use special permit prior to voting on the waiver?
I think we'll vote on this one first, yeah. Okay? Okay, so, is there other...
Discussion?
Does this the light vote?
Yeah, any, any other discussion from the board? No. Okay? The, okay, the findings are facts.
So that's been moved and seconded.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move, move...
Second vote and use special permit.
It's the waivers.
Do the waivers.
It should be the waivers.
Do the waivers first, right?
Yeah.
But I'm trying to figure out... As it's written?
Yeah.
Okay. Move to adopt the following waiver, that the applicant is seeking waivers and/or modifications from commercial and residential requirements of the rules and regulations, as the requirements for a submittal are not pertinent to a residential structure, i.e. landscape plans and so forth.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay?
Finally, I move to approve with conditions, the use special permit and waivers pursuant to 400-6, waiver of rules and regulations requested for the attached accessory apartment based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, with the above findings and following conditions. One, the owner shall maintain occupancy in one of the units as required by Town Code. Two, at least one off-street parking place, space, shall be provided for the necessary, for the accessory dwelling unit. Three, the owner must comply with the Health Department memo dated November 21, 2017, which I just read. Four, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And five, any changes to the plan shall be subject to the further planning board review.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
So you should understand that you have to deal with the septic issue that I read from the Health Department memorandum.
Yeah.
Okay. And this decision essentially tells you to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
That part I understand, the rest of it was...
Would you like us to repeat this so you can...
Oh, God, no.
If there's no further, if there's no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. You understand that?
I got that. Thank you.
Ma'am, do you have this?
I think you do, you submitted it to us.
Okay, all right, all right.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the public meeting. This is new business, waiver of site plan. Continued PB 2017-29, the Town of Howard Golf Department, as owner and applicant, care of Fred Clark, Administrator, and Charlene Green, Assistant Administrator, as representative, seeking approval for waiver of site plan, relocation of the existing fuel tank, demolition of two existing card barns, and the construction of a new card barn. The property is located at 183 Oak Street, Map 61, Parcel 8-1, more commonly known as Cranberry Valley Golf Course, in the R.R. and W.R. zoning district. The applicant is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard. Section 325-55F is set forth in Mass. General Law 40A, Section 9.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
At the outset, I need to make a statement. I'm a member of the Cranberry Valley Golf Course. I don't believe it creates a conflict for me, but I just want it on the record.
And I might reiterate that, I happen to be a member, and I noticed I'm actually wearing a Cranberry Valley...
We appreciate the advertising.
Valley Golf shirt, too, so I don't think there's a conflict of interest, and David, you're a member, too?
Not until you tell me whether it's a conflict of interest.
So that, I don't, I think, my feeling is there's no conflict of interest.
Yeah, I don't feel the risk, but I thought it should be on the record.
Okay, Ellie, you're back.
I'm back. So this is Cranberry Valley, they're asking for a waiver. Um, so this is Cranberry Valley, they're asking for a waiver of site plan. We do have some comments from boards committees. I handed out the conservation response, and I also sent it out in the email, but it just basically talks about where they stand with conservation currently. So, in addition to staff comments, administrative requirements have been met, but the existing site where their proposed cart barn, uh, is to be located has currently been cleared and graded. So this is a violation of Section 325-18O, um, which says that you have to come in to planning board before you can clear, but they are in here now, which is great. They are also proposing a waiver of site plan first, uh, for the cart barn, so that's what's in front of you on the plans. Um, and then they're hoping to come back at a later date because they're hoping to change the location of the parking around and add some more parking potentially. So at that point, they would have to come back for a full site plan, and that's one of my proposed conditions as well. Just for your information too, they've added supplemental, um, plans since the last time they were here that show some of the proposed landscaping that's going to go into revegetate the area around the golf, uh, cart barn, and then also to revegetate and kind of change the area vegetation by the existing, um, club house.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, I kind of breezed through that, so if you want me to go into more detail, please let me.
I think most of us have driven by, for the most part. You'd like, you have, go ahead, David.
She mentioned revising the parking at each date. Were you talking about revising the parking right in front of the building?
Actually, if I could, I had a, like a little bit of an opening statement that.
So why did, yeah.
In context, if that would, if that would work for the.
Why don't you, why don't you give us a little summation, and then we can.
Sure, I appreciate the opportunity to do that. First and foremost, we, you know, we try to save the taxpayers' money on Christopher Clark, Town Administrator, and one of the things that we decided to do is not have a, a project manager. We thought we could do this in-house. We've had some staff issues, a, a member of our staff was, had some health issues, so we, we weren't as effective as I would like to be. Uh, we did contract with people to go in and, and do some basic prep, and they went a little bit too far. And as soon as we became aware that we've put a stop to it, so we wanted to make sure that we come before you. So you have my apologies that we went a little bit too far, more farther than I would have liked to have seen, but it was, um, not a malicious intent by any stretch, it was just a prep. In terms of the reason for the waiver, uh, we are trying to, uh, make sure that we can do the work without affecting the golf season. So one of the things that we realized is that we have the bid out, we have the bids back, uh, for the cart, for the cart barn building. Uh, that has a eight to 10-week delivery time. So they won't go and actually order the building until they have a building permit. So for us to have the building permit, we need to, to have the building waiver and accomplish the waiver first, so we can get the building ordered and start that eight to 10-week cycle. So that's kind of why we're breaking it up into two pieces. Last time, when I was in, we had a discussion kind of internally, and we thought that it's a metal building and it's not very pretty. Uh, we had to cut some trees too, because we have a, uh, electric line coming in, so we, we cleared a lot of the site, and we thought that it would be more advantageous to bring in a, a landscape architect to kind of go through and, and give us some concepts. So what I'd like to do tonight is to obviously get the waiver for the three items that we had mentioned. I think that is important to us, to accomplish that. And then secondly, uh, to make a commitment to you, uh, that we have already engaged the services, we did the second part of those services the night of, when we were here before, to make sure that we could get the, uh, the screening on the building. So I'm gonna have Michael from, uh, MLC do an overview of the landscape plan to solicit your input, and within 60 days, we will be back with a formal site plan. Uh, the traffic configuration, parking, I think, uh, Bob Cafarelli has done some of that, we'll make sure that Bob does it, we'll make sure we have the signage on there, and anything else, but if there's any comments that you have on the preliminary, uh, we certainly would appreciate it, so we can give some direction to our consultant, uh, to go through. With the board's indulgence, if, if you have questions maybe about the waiver, maybe we'll do those first, and then secondly, we'll like to turn it over to Michael to have him do the presentation on the, uh, landscape concept. One of the landscape concepts, to your question, was to, to take away some of the parking in front of the building, have a cart, uh, cart area for people to return the carts, and do landscaping, that's often, just easier to look at.
What I thought, I heard you say, uh, Ellie say was that you were, uh, having a issue with the change to the parking lot.
Actually, the, the landscape plan and the, the site plan that we have, we do have a, a parking area, uh, that's located near, uh, the driveway, one of the driveways coming in. Right now, it's kind of just a, a dirt area, uh, we probably, we have that, um, we, we already did a little bit too much work there too. We, we put down some, uh, material, uh, hard base, and we are gonna screen that, and the idea behind that is for additional parking, and they have truckloads of material that come in, uh, to help with the, uh, course, and that would act as a, a material storage area. Okay. We would also move a dumpster in there, but we want to make sure we don't, the first thing you shouldn't see as you pull into the parking lot is a dumpster, so we, we wanted to make sure we engaged, uh, services to make sure we screen those elements.
Yep, okay.
So can you focus on the waiver elements first, and then I'll turn it over to Michael with the board's indulgence?
Chris, preliminary, um, the two existing buildings that we see on the plan.
Yes.
Uh, what's the long-term plan with respect to those?
The two that have the cart barn, uh, the, the carts now will both be demolished and removed.
Oh, I understand that. I, I'm talking about.
Oh, existing building one and existing building two in the back.
Yep, they remain.
Okay, yeah, excellent, great question. Uh, we are gonna relocate the, uh, fuel tank, uh, adjacent to existing building one. Existing building one is the primary maintenance area, and that one, as part of the town meeting vote, we did ask for, uh, reskining of that building, so that building has good bones, if you would, and it just requires reskining. So we will do a, a reskining project on that, I don't think that.
What's reskining?
Sorry. It, it basically, it has a steel superstructure, and you just take the metal pieces off and put a new metal piece on, so they, they call it reskining. Sorry. We did the same thing down at DPW.
That fuel tank is for your maintenance equipment, not the golf carts, correct?
Uh, actually, so it, it currently is for the golf carts, the, the fuel tank consists right next to the car barn currently, and that's for the golf carts. Uh, the plan would be to, to relocate it down to maintenance where it would be used just for maintenance equipment, because the new cart barn will, uh, be equipped to handle an electric fleet. The plan is using electric fleet.
So you'll sw, I'm sorry.
You have a, yeah, one more year lease on the gas carts?
Yes.
So you need to move the cart, the, the tank for that temporarily?
Yes. And then we will use it for maintenance, the maintenance department as well.
And this is an above-ground.
Above-ground.
Right, that's correct. Secondary containment in the plan?
Yes.
So I have a, I have a question.
Go right ahead.
I might ask. I'm, I'm, at one point, I heard something about the proposed cart building being cleared, graded, and graded without a permit, and I'd like to understand how that happened, or why?
That, that happened, in essence, I had asked, uh, the Department of Public Works to go in and do some preliminary, so that way, if people came in for the site visit and things of that nature, we would have, uh, the ability for them to see the site, and, I hate to say, boys with toys. You know, once they got the equipment, they, they did go in and they, they cleared more than we had anticipated. With the conservation, uh, there was a misunderstanding that they thought they were at the 100-foot, uh, marker, and they weren't, they were at the 50-foot marker.
Yep.
And that was about 257 square feet that were impacted, and we will more than, more than replace that. We have that as a commitment to, uh, conservation.
And that was what you were referring to in your opening?
In my opening statement.
Okay, thank you.
David?
I got a bunch of questions with respect to the landscaping. Uh, right in front of the building, obviously spaced, so you don't.
You want to present the plan first, and then?
Yeah, if, I was just gonna do the.
Oh, sure. I didn't know what you were going to.
If you, if you want to have.
I'm ready for it now.
If you're ready for it now, we, we can do the landscape plan.
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, do we want to discuss the waiver and determine whether we want to vote on the waiver first?
Get one underway, yeah.
Before we go into more detail, because, Chris, if I understand what you're talking about, the landscape plan would come back to us at another time, and this is just a preliminary view.
This is an overview?
As an overview, that's correct.
So it's an overview, which gives us an idea, but it's going to be coming back to us under site plan review at a later date?
Yes, within 60 days.
So, um, I think it might be more efficient for us to deal with the waiver first, and then we can certainly, you know, have some discussion of the landscape plan.
Absolutely, appreciate that.
So, is there any discussion on the waiver?
Yes, on the waiver, um, Chris, I guess I have a concern that by granting the waiver, we're granting sort of the right for you to go ahead on certain pieces of the total plan, which, as you mentioned yourself, is in the process of evolving. And so, you know, even the landscape plan that you're presenting us, to us tonight, is, is a preliminary plan and could potentially change, and you're talking about a parking lot plan. It seems to me that I have a grave concern about not reviewing a fully fleshed-out plan for this entire area under a regular site plan review, you know, situation. I, you had mentioned something about the timing, I guess I don't completely understand why this is being developed incrementally, and what effect the timing that you're talking about has, you know, on that incremental development, developing a total plan, which could be presented to us.
I guess from, uh, from what, and, and I'm the administrator, so you know, I'm the jack, a jack of all trades, but what I've been, uh, kind of informed by our engineering department, is that when you do a, and we are asking for, and we have received bids for a prefabricated metal building. So we literally get bids for a kit, and we have to design out the foundation, and we have to, the building gets ordered, and that building being ordered is eight to 10 weeks. So what we were seeking to do with the waiver is, we already are out to bid on the building, and we have the bids back, we want to get the building ordered, because if we were to wait and, and do the bid at the same time, that we're gonna do the, the landscape and the other, uh, parking lot improvements, then I think we're gonna, we're gonna bump into the season, and we are desperate to make sure that we do not impact the season. I think it makes sense too, for us to do it as a, a, a separate one-off, if you would, because it is a, a standalone, I mean, the building is standalone. Everything that we had for the landscape plan is specifically parking lot and traffic flow, uh, oriented. This is really for the cart barn, so it brings the path, it brings the carts into the building. So I think from an administrative standpoint or a management standpoint, when we were going through this plan, it did make some sense for us to take the time, order the building, get, get the work done on the foundation, and then make sure we do the due diligence to make sure that we have the site plan overall. To say it's gonna change significantly, I think you see, you see is what you get. I mean, I'm talking about, you know, the type plantings that we're gonna have, uh, material storage. What you see from what Bob Cafarelli submitted is not gonna change so much. What we wanted to do, and Bob didn't do, the, the town engineer, is put in the landscaping, how do you buffer it, how do you make it look? Uh, you know, we have a first-class golf course, and we don't want to have it be short-changed, so we wanted to make sure that we give additional attention to the landscape element. But we believe that during that eight to 10 weeks that the building is gonna be on order, we can certainly do the due diligence to get the landscaping, uh, underway and come back. So that was the rationale, was just because it's a modular building, we knew we were looking at an eight to 10-week, uh, time delay from the time we order it to the time that it's gonna be installed.
Okay, and you mentioned that you were concerned about the time delay with regard to the, the season for golf. When does the golf?
We'd like to. Uh. The golf course opens in April, I mean, it gets, it's a slow start, really. Uh, it, it's, high season starts in June.
Okay, so the high season doesn't start till June, you're talking eight to 10 weeks order, so if you back that up, that's ordering, it can be ordered as late as the beginning of April, and still be here by the beginning of the season? Am I re, figuring that out correctly?
I don't, I, I think that if we order the building, I mean, we have, if, if you guys vote the waiver tonight, we have it on for the selectmen's meeting on the 18th. The selectmen don't meet again until January 8th. So if the selectmen approve it on December 18th, we still need the applicant, the, the successful bidder, to come in and pull a building permit, get organized. So you're talking about that eight to 10 weeks don't, doesn't really start until really beginning of January. So we're talking about having the building probably delivered in a, in a March timeline. And, you know, I, I've done a fair amount of projects in, in the time being in administration, not just here, but other places, and, you know, you always have to plan for contingency time, and we certainly don't want to be opening and having construction equipment at the same time that we have people coming in in June. That, that's not gonna help in, in terms of the operation of the course. So I think our, our mission here, or what we're trying to accomplish, is to have as much done as we can, uh, by April, so that we were out of the way of, of the golf season.
So, so really, and, and I know David's got a couple of questions, and I'll just quickly summarize it, but really, you're looking at getting the foundation and the building up as quick as you can, and between now and the next eight, six or eight weeks or 10 weeks, we'll get a much more firmed-out plan of what's going to happen on the entrance way and screening and so on. Go ahead, David.
Having gone through a bunch of construction projects like this, I think you're already up against a pretty tight schedule.
I do too.
So if we delay this, it's really gonna mess up your, your, uh, May and June schedule, uh, without a doubt, especially if you run into weather problems along the way.
I concur.
Chris, so just to make it clear before David starts, the waiver would be for the building only, and the rest, the rest of the parking lot, the rest of the entrance way, and, and, um, all of the, all of the planning will be back, and we'll, we'll get a full review of that.
Could I ask a follow-up question? Uh, Chris, um, if we do not vote the waiver tonight, how quickly could you get back to us with sort of a full plan, including the landscaping and the parking, uh, the changes in parking that you mentioned, uh, for us to review under site plan review?
I mean, we made a commitment of 30 to 60 days, but once the plan's done, then it depends upon your calendar too, and how quickly we can get back before you. I, I think, again, it, I think the tight, you know, we, we're in a tight timeline, and to have the waivers granted is really getting to a point where it's, it's gonna be critical for us to get that done first. I, I wouldn't recommend trying to, to delay and, and trying to do them simultaneously. I think that that's gonna put us under the gun.
Just for clarification purposes, so they, it is, they are requesting the cart barn, but they're also removing just a few, uh, parking spaces in the bump-out area. I just want clarification for the board.
Well, I think too.
Yeah, we are, I'll show the answer point to, we are gaining parking because that car, the bolt structure's actually being removed, so that extra space is gonna be parking, as well as some green space, so.
But that's gonna be when you come in for the site plan later. I just wanted to clarify that.
I think the waiver does cover three parts. I mean, once we get going and we have construction crews in there, we'd like to demolish and, and kind of clear the decks, so we do the paving, so we need to move the, the gas tank, hence the request for the gas tank to be waived, and those two, uh, the two current cart barns.
I, I, the, the one concern I have, if we take down the old cart barns, and something happens with the new cart barn, you're gonna have 75 or 100 carts sitting out there, it'll look like Tennessee.
Yeah, I, that one, we probably will wait to make sure that the, you know, the building is going up. And once the building's on site, I mean, I had a, we had a, uh, airport hangar I did in my last community, we had a tornado that came through, they go up quick. I mean, once everything's delivered, the key, the, the key is, it's gotta be delivered, and in order for it to be delivered, we need the building permit, in order for the building inspector to issue it, we need the waiver.
Mm-hmm. Mary?
How confident are we that the cart barn location isn't gonna change? And I come to that from the site plan at Brooks Park, that had to come both back to planning board and historic because the pavilion had to move after we'd already approved it. Are we confident that the building's not gonna change, and that it's not gonna be moved again?
Yes.
Because once we get into it.
I think after.
We know things change as soon as you start digging.
After Brooks Park, just so you guys know, I was asked to sign off on the building permit, and when I said, well, this is obviously what planning board approved, right, and was told no, we had some private discussions about how we do business, and if we come to ask for approval, we'll construct it based upon the approval. So that was done inappropriately and people were spoken to in regards to that. And I have asked for staff, and staff's very well aware of this, they're to come to get me and make sure that we are doing things in accordance with the approvals that we achieved from you guys.
My concern is really more from a practical standpoint, as opposed to, you know, just, as we know, when you start digging, things happen and things change and you need a contingency and maybe you're going to find something that you, that you can't put the foundation there, so that's kind of where my concern comes from with it.
Yeah, I don't-
Mary.
Have you done soil borings to determine the location of the retaining wall and the foundation for the building, that there's no problems under there?
I don't think we have done soil borings. The one thing that we have done on that site, so we're pretty confident, is we had an issue, actually, Capital Outlay will remember, that there was an issue about undermining in the parking lot, so we actually did ground penetrating radar, went down about twelve to fifteen feet to see what we have. All that material is fill material, so I think we have a good sense for what we're in for.
With respect to the building, and I know that's not what we're going to decide tonight, but is there a foundation under that, did you say?
There is a foundation under, and the retaining walls would be constructed all at the same time.
Come with the existing building or the new one?
The new one. And are you going to use that basement? I guess, I can't describe it any other way.
No.
No. Just going to be filled?
It's going to be filled.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, how do, how do, before I close the public hearing, are there any questions from the public? Just sitting there waiting, okay?
Larry, it's not a public hearing, so we don't need to close it.
I know, but I'm just-
Yeah.
I know, okay. So that being the case.
Go.
Yeah?
Move to adopt the following. One, the parcels are in the RR and WR zoning district. Two, the application does not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site and to abutting properties. Three, there will be minimal change to building coverage and site coverage. Four, there will be limited impact on parking and other existing uses of the site.
Okay. Then moved.
Second.
Alan seconded? Okay, now, is there any discussion? Any discussion? No discussion? That being the case, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried unanimously.
Yeah, and I would like to go on record that I abstained.
Oh, you abstained, okay.
Move to approve with conditions, the applicant's request for a waiver of a site plan for the construction of a new golf cart barn, the relocation of an existing fuel tank, and the demolition of two existing golf cart barns based on the findings of fact above, and that the proposal does not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site, to abutting properties and structures, and the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval with the following condition. One, a full site plan application and plan shall be submitted to the planning board prior to the addition of an employee parking lot and/or reconfiguration of the existing parking lot.
Could we just have that changed to within sixty days of tonight's hearing?
I think that would be more appropriate.
Within sixty days of tonight's hearing?
I don't think we need a time limit, but it's up to you, Mr. Jones.
If you want a, do you want a time limit on this?
Yeah.
We can add that in, the existing park lot within a period of sixty calendar days.
Somebody needs to amend, I can amend my own motion.
Move to amend, so amend.
Okay.
And can you-
I just want to clarify, sixty days from the date of the public hearing, this public, or this meeting, public meeting tonight.
Sixty calendar days away, okay. Well, that means the poor landscape architect now actually has to work over Christmas, but the hell. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed? Mr. Atkinson is opposed. Who else is in favor? That being the case, that takes care of that section, but you wanted to make a presentation, you want to give us a quick overview?
Absolutely. I'm hoping to knock this out of the pocket and sort of, um, you guys have a deep where the front of the, the front entrance first and then I'll traverse to the cart barn area.
Okay.
Can the camera see that? Plan?
I can see it right there, same thing.
Good. So, since some of you guys are members, you know, as you pull in, you have this really beautiful, you know, entry, and then as you kind of come up to the front of the building here, you see these, you know, two large cart barn structures, so I think it's great that they're moving off to the side because now your main view is going to be, you know, the golf course to the right, and then over this new entry and arrival area that's going to be in the front. Because I think now, a problem that I noticed when I pulled up is that you really don't have a destination point because of those cart barns. So what we decided to do in this plan here was really prohibit people from driving through here, there's going to be movable planters here, there's a pullover space here where people can get out, there'll be a podium so they can get out, someone can help them take their golf clubs out, put them on the golf racks and then walk down this walkway into the building. This whole area here is where the cart barn is currently, here and here, so this is the existing entry coming in, so that's actually going to be moved down to where this open green is here, so we're actually going to be gaining some parking through this area where the cart barns are currently. And also, as you come down, we created this retaining wall, so we do have some grade change here, so retaining wall, a couple pillars with some landscape lighting so people don't, you know, trip over the steps when it gets dark. We reinforced this walkway here with some Cleveland pear trees, which can also be lit. So really, this whole entry area, a lot of the trees here are going to be removed. This one existing tree on the side's going to be kept, some larger London plane trees are going to be planted to help reinforce this larger tree here. And as you enter the space, it's my understanding that people like to gather here and sit and actually have lunch, so we created a landing slash patio space, a couple benches, and reinforced all that with some boxwoods and knockout roses, some Japanese maples to kind of make that space feel a little bit tighter, I guess, than the walkway and somewhere you actually enjoy spending some time. So what we did do is, you know, these can move so an emergency vehicle can get up and come around the front. All this area here is now going to be parking for carts, so it's going to be a lot easier for, you know, your guests when they come out to, you know, get their bags, put in the cart, go in and pay, and go off to the course. This also, this radius here also meets the forty-two foot radius for the eighteen-wheeler for dropping off to the restaurant, so my understanding is if they come in here and then back up and unload and pull out. So that's basically this front space and then back. So now this is the cart barn building, so you can see here, you know, as you pull up, this is going to be the new entrance up top here, the additional parking spots which will anchor with a parking aisle. This new building here, where it was actually bumped out, there's going to be an eight-foot plant bed in front of the building to help screen the front facade. There'll be pullover areas for carts, and you know, it is going to be large enough for cars too, but, so, you know, whether or not we do pavers there, sand concrete, that's a little bit down the road, but this area will be a different material than the parking lot, so the people know they can pull over there. This area here, here's that retaining wall, so my major concern is when people are coming from the course, coming through here, they're going to be looking at that retaining wall in the building. So I planted river birches, which are multi-stem, they grow up pretty tall, and also some green giant arborvitae in that area, which will help to take down the scale of the wall, and also planted the front of it with inkberries and dogwood. This back slope here is going to be hydro-seeded and mowed one to two times per year, it's going to kind of be a little bit more natural, almost kind of like the sides of the golf course, and there'll be some river birches planted in the hillside as well to help scale down that building. And then, as you come up to the front, planted a variety of, you know, tighter, green arborvitae, which, you know, stay relatively tight and grow tall, and also some Cleveland pear trees, which stay tighter too and will get some height to help scale down that building. And then coming down to the storage area, so currently this area is wide open, so what I decided to do was, here, plant some trees, then also plant some Leyland cypress to talk to the side, so as you're pulling down, you're not looking into that area. And also, we moved the dumpster, which is currently in the lower area, I believe, over into this space here, which, you know, the trash trucking back in, get the trash.
David.
There's three main facades of this building that are visible, the one you just described on the pro shop side, side for the parking lot, and then the other side, all of which are visible. We've just got one London plane tree and the Emerald Green arborvida at the corner to screen that.
He's talking about the-
Right there, yeah. That's one of the first things you see, and as Chris pointed out, it's not very pretty. Actually, I think that's really a compliment to the building, an undeserved compliment to a Butler building, but is there, and I recognize you need the wash area, but if you could put some other screening trees there, I think it would really improve the first impression.
Okay, so screening out almost that washy area?
Yeah, just screening it, you know. The, what is the mature size of the Emerald Green arborvida?
They'll, I mean, they'll get thirty, forty feet tall with time, but, you know, when they go in, I've specified out here to go in at seven, eight feet, and, you know, we can put those in larger too or similar, but they do, they don't grow as fast as the green giants, which are planted on the other side of the wall, but, I mean, they grow approximately a foot a year.
Yeah, more than that.
Well, the green giants grow about two feet a year, but the Emerald Greens do grow slower, they don't grow as fast, but.
You know, it just looks very tight there for that size tree, and I recognize that you don't have a lot of room there, but if you could bump that out a little bit, give it room to grow.
Yeah.
The trees in front of us, the Cleveland pear, beautiful tree, excellent choice, but it's got about a twenty or twenty-foot spread, about five feet to the building, you could trim that side?
Well, so Cleveland pear trees do grow relatively upright too, so if they are restricted on one side and they do grow towards the sun, so, you know, with that building, how it is, they're going to kind of grow out and away from it to begin with. There's definitely a limited species that can go in, I mean, we can do a hornbeam, which is something that will stay a lot tighter than the pear, which just won't really give all that much of a canopy. They kind of grow more like Emerald Green, really tighten upright, so, but.
I guess the main concern I have about the Cleveland pear is that it's only got a fifteen to twenty-year lifespan, you'd be replacing them. Is there something you could put in there that's just as nice, but it's going to last a little longer? Not that I care, but.
Yeah, I can take a look and see if there's some different species that would work.
The, it's another, it says it's a three-inch caliper, three to three and a half inch caliper, how tall is that?
Three and a half caliber trees, about fifteen, eighteen feet.
Okay, so it's going to be as high as the building then? Building's about fourteen feet high?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that, oh, the last comment I have is down by the screening the employee parking with the Leyland cypress. What about the blade for the Leyland cypress? I've had friends that have lost two or three of them.
Yeah, I mean, they definitely have to be sprayed, but for this application and the space that you have there, I think that they're probably the best fit. I mean, we can do a green giant arborvida there as well, they grow similar, I mean, the Leylands will get bigger faster.
Yeah, they're more resistant.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's a nice plant, they put a lot of work into it, thank you.
Yeah, problem, thanks.
I'll just, I have a couple of quick questions and I won't take too long, and the point that you made is that we've got one of the nicer golf courses, I think it's rated in the top, one of the top hundred public courses in the country. The entranceway that now shows existing lawn and vegetation, and those pines aren't long for this world. You know, they really aren't. At some point in time, maybe you might be able to put some road addendums or something in there that will screen it, make it look-
Help screen the parking lot.
It's your first, your only chance to make that first impression because, you know, you'll see that coming in as opposed to not seeing the new tractor shed.
Okay. Augusta. Yeah, we actually, we talked about that last time we were out there, about possibly removing a lot of the pines and the vegetation there and potentially pulling the parking out there a little bit too, but it's kind of, you know, we haven't really made a decision on that yet, so that's kind of up in the air.
But if you've got a couple more trees that grow quick and fast, building one and building two down here, the other, the existing tractor sheds, if you could throw a few of them, maybe just screen that a little bit.
That's the idea too.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you can put a silk suit on a pig, but.
So maybe down that row, London plane trees going down from the new building down to the existing structure, maybe if we underplant that.
Okay. Those are my silly comments. Joe?
When you come back for the presentation on the follow-up, can you be assured, or can we be assured that you'll bring Mr. Fernandez with you?
Yeah, he had a family issue tonight, so he was unable to join us.
Okay.
And that just happened, so.
You're going to complain about the location of the temporary pins this winter? Anybody else have any further questions? David?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment that, as you pointed out, this is a terrific facility. It's really one of the crown jewels of Harwich, and I've noticed significant improvements in the last couple of years since you've been there. It's, and I assume that your fingerprints are on, you know, the initiation of this cart barn.
Absolutely.
So.
Norman's been a great addition, he's really has been a great addition for us.
And I'm assuming that the cost of this is going to be paid for by non-resident green fees rather than, you know.
Well, you folks have a separate account.
We do have a separate fund.
I thought I remembered that from Capital Outlay.
But everyone pays that uses the course.
I had occasion, I don't know how I ended up on it, but I went around with the USGA when they came to check the course and took all the soil samples and all those kinds of things, and they, gentlemen couldn't be more complimentary, basically saying, you've got a beautiful facility, don't screw it up, you know.
Good, so, we need anything else? No. Thank you ever so much.
Appreciate your input.
I like the landscape plan, continue on, and we'll see you, have a good Christmas, we'll see you shortly.
You too, thank you.
We'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda would be, nope, not the bottom, informal discussion, Mr. Hart, step right up.
Can I ask you, we have a hundred-seat plan, and all of that is previous to fifteen seat plan. I also dropped the letter. The other questions I have.
No, he's in here.
You get a second, just give him the paper.
The main purpose of why I'm here is for the benefit of the town. I'm working with the town administrator and the harbor master. You have the letter there, one group has said they'd like to have us consider a hundred-seat restaurant at Sacre Tuck at Harbor. Now, a couple of years ago, at a downtown meeting, the total package included a restaurant. At that time, we thought the restaurant would be in the neighborhood of sixty seats. As you know, for the costs and the setback- As you know, for the costs and the setbacks because of water lines and things like that, we had three million dollars, and that just wasn't sufficient to do everything. Recently, we received this letter, came to Chris and I, and this organization, and I understand verbally there are others, would like to be considered for a bid for the purpose of a hundred-seat restaurant at Sakatucket Harbor. Part of that is that a land lease, in other words, they would lease the land, have to build the, design the building, build the building, design the septic system, install the septic system, manage the facility, and the town would get revenue from the lease, revenue from the building taxes, and the meal taxes. Essentially, what we're trying to do is complete what we talked to the town meeting about at no additional cost to the town of Howard. So I'm here as the former chairman of what the committee isn't the committee anymore, of the Sakatucket Development Committee, and my concern is before we work with Chris and everybody else putting together a bid or an RFP, that each of the departments are aware that we're thinking about this, and I've worked with Ali already and the other departments, looking at septic systems, parking, and things like that. I'd like to remind everyone that one of the main focuses we had a couple of years ago when acquiring the Downey property was for the purposes of additional parking. As you can see from that, I'm sorry, only have one diagram, we're talking the same area. You'll see it individually. If you look at the building that was going to be the sixty-seat restaurant, what they're talking about is going a little further toward Route 28 to accommodate the extra space. I've talked with conservation, they have no objection going toward Route 28, we just can't go left, right, or, or ahead. We've also talked to the Board of Health, we know that it has to be a totally separate septic system, and they're, they're figuring out the, the size of gallons. The bidder, if they're successful, would have to pay for all that design, but we have to put together the specifications, and that's why I'm here, as an informal introduction to all of you of what is being proposed.
And maybe if I could, I'd like to provide a little elaboration.
Oh, you do, for a minute. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just so, and this is information, so I don't think this, it's a problem. I'm absolutely conflicted about nine different ways on this project. That letter is signed by my nephew, and I, I just want to make sure that, that we're, which is only an information session and not, not, we're not taking any, any evidence, because I can't, I can't sit on this.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I do think this is very much informational. One of the things that we have done is we have asked the department heads for their input in terms of what issues that we may have. The Board of Selectmen has not had an opportunity yet to, to weigh fully in on this, and most likely, administration will present the recommendation that there were basically three concepts. One is we have the Snack Shack that has received some approvals already, and then the sixty-seat restaurant has been designed at least, so we have the design for that, and then we have certainly a legitimate public interest in the hundred-seat. So what we're trying to do is to get a sense, and we will bring those concepts back to the Board of Selectmen to see. Ultimately, the Board of Selectmen is the one that is responsible for the site, and then would have to bring something back to town meeting. We do have for the site already, town meeting last year did approve going up to ten years for the Snack Shack, so the, the Snack Shack has ten years. I think, though, under the concept of having someone construct a restaurant or a Snack Shack, and then as well as the applicable parking, not parking deck, the, the boardwalk area would have to be done, as well as the septic, that most likely, we would approach town meeting this year to go beyond ten years and to go up to maybe thirty years, to get a longer time horizon for a contractor to be able to come in and do this.
Okay, Mary.
Is the expectation that you could have bids out and back and, and ready for town meeting in May?
That's a discussion that we have to have with the board and discussions with the, the town attorney. He wasn't sure, and I tend to agree with this, that if we, if we make it questionable whether we're gonna get to thirty years, how much effort is somebody really gonna put into it? So it probably makes sense to approach town meeting and say we would like to have, and I'm just picking thirty, 'cause most home mortgages are thirty, but if we had a thirty-year time horizon, then that, I think, gives us the full spectrum. We could do the Snack Shack, we could do the sixty-seat restaurant, or conceivably the hundred-seat restaurant.
Could, could I answer one question? One of the stipulations we have from the Waterways Committee is we've gotta look at what we're doing right now. So what I would like to see, the stipulation, that if this were approved, they couldn't start building until September of 2019. So you don't tie up this year. We're gonna be under a tight rein with Memorial Day having everything done as it is. We don't want to have other construction and others. It, the two septic systems, the first one will go in for the, for the harbor master, which is toward Route 28 over near Brax, that parking lot. The other one, which we've already checked with the engineers, would be nearer the other part, so it's not gonna, it's not gonna interfere with 2017 and 18.
But aren't you gonna have to redig a parking lot? If you've paved over a parking lot and they're going to put a septic in, aren't you gonna have to just dig up that whole parking lot all over again?
No, you, you dig up one part of the parking lot toward Route 28 for the initial septic system, which is a new system for the town, then you're moving down toward Nantucket. You dig up the other part with the other requirements that are needed for a restaurant at a later date.
It wouldn't be the entire lot, but it would be what's necessary to do the second system.
Well, that, that's my point. If you're, if you're paving the whole parking lot for, for this coming summer, essentially...
We're paving the Downey property if we can. We're not paving the other parking lot.
Yeah, just to be clear, we actually, when they put the septic system in, they would carve that out, put the septic system in, and then pave that, so the plan does not include repaving of the entire existing site.
My concern was that you were getting into new...
Chris, just a point of clarification, is it going to now be the administration's recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that you go with the hundred-seat restaurant, or haven't you got to that point of yet?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, my job is to really offer up what the options are, so there's some advantages, 'cause we already have been through some of the regulators for the Snack Shack, so I'm gonna recommend, basically, here's three options, which option do you wanna pursue? We could do an RFP and pursue all three and give a higher level of priority for one versus the other, but that's really a discussion for the board, and what direction I get is, is gonna be up to them.
Yeah, so then you wouldn't be going out with an RFP until you've had that...
Absolutely.
Okay, and so you are considering potentially, you know, with, one way of going out, going out with alternate, alternative in the RFP?
Yes.
So that you may have an RFP for sixty, but there would be like a, an alternative?
I think you would have potentially a Snack Shack, a sixty-seat restaurant. Those are already designed, and I have those, very simple for an RFP, to take what we've already designed and plug them in. The hundred-seat would, would have to have the, the, you know, the potential bidder would have to kind of visualize and, and lay out how they would have tried to accomplish that.
And when do you think you're going to the Board of Selectmen with this discussion? Do you know yet, or is that a sensitive issue?
If I would stop losing people to chat them and, and other things, I'd have a different timetable, but...
You can lock the door.
Yeah, yeah.
Just try the screw, Ally.
All that stuff takes time. Hopefully, hopefully in January, we'll, we'll try to have the discussion, because I do think we need to have a discussion for town meeting, and, you know, what do they wanna see, and the length of time.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, I'll recognize myself, I, I think there's a lot of, a lot of questions that, that have to be answered, that haven't been completely answered. We've got right across the street, that outer cape, that has a tremendous parking requirement, as you know. There's gonna be additional parking requirements. I know the Downey property is there, and the Downey property is, I think, spoken for, for the harbor period, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's for the restaurant. That, that's a far different thing, that's, you know, the harbor is one thing, the restaurant is something different. Chapter ninety-one will tell you all about that. So there's that, and, you know, we've gotta deal with the Department of Transportation for, for twenty-eight that goes through there with, if there's extra people walking through. And, and I think the concern that I have is, are we putting too many restaurant seats in Howard? I mean, that's, that's, that's it, you know? We could go down to any restaurant you want this weekend, and there'd be no wait anywhere.
Well, Mr. Chairman, when I was sitting right over there, they had the same questions about the overlay district, and look at the restaurants we've got now.
Well, the point is, a lot of restaurants don't survive, and they don't survive in Howard, and come December, January, February, and maybe March, November, they struggle.
This is a seasonal restaurant.
And, okay, it, it won't be, it won't be an all-year restaurant? Somebody's gonna put money into a seasonal rep, okay?
Let me, I wanna say, I wanna, I'm getting a bridge here, kind of like somebody else. I don't want to be the person that answers the questions that these other people have asked me, because I'm trying to stay as a town representative, and what I'm hoping by introducing all you people to this, you can ask the questions, because it looks like I'm representing one of them, if I'm not careful. I've been working on this with the town for twenty years, first with the Waterways, which I'm the chairman, and three years in this. The town of Howard, with the exception of one vote, voted for what we're proposing, a restaurant at Sakatucket, a new harbor, and the, the whole facilities. The issue of parking across the street didn't even come up. I know very well, again, when I was here, because if a business is within five hundred feet of a municipal parking lot, they're allowed to use it, but all of a sudden, what used to be a office building across the street, and before that, a boat thing, if all of a sudden, they make it into another Fontaine area, we've got a problem.
Well, that, that, go ahead.
I got a couple of questions that are not necessarily related to the concept, but when we first started looking at Sakatucket with the purchase of the Downey property, there was a need for long parking spaces for boats, trailers, and trucks and SUVs.
Yes.
I don't see those on here on the Downey property. Are those proposed for the western, just using two spaces on the western part of the parking, or are they not?
Well, that's all that can be on the, on the eastern side. And, and the, the parking that we needed for the...
On the state side.
It's, it's closer to the harbor on the, on the east end of the site. It's so faint here, it's hard to see it.
Yeah, you're correct.
I'm not sure what you...
He's correct.
I, I think...
This area.
That is the eastern side, and yes, that is only for trailers.
The Downey property, one of the things that, when John Rendon did the presentation, we wanted to try to get people, instead of crossing Route 28, to be able to park, instead of over on that side, come into the Downey property, so it's regular parking, because it's anticipated that there are traffic.
The, the blue building that's closer to twenty-eight with an X through it, that's the sixty-seat?
No, no, the restaurant is right next to the harbor master.
No, I understand that, but what was, what was crossed out?
That was crossed out. That was going to be the ticketing.
Oh, okay.
And what that's been replaced with is, you can see, the, the little buildings, yes. That, that X, thank you, that building goes away completely. That becomes more parking.
Michael, do you wanna throw some light on this?
Nope.
Okay.
Totally confused by this, but I would, I would ask that Matt clarify the one vote that he mentioned. All but one vote voted for this. What's the one vote?
I don't know.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
It was Jeff from Brax, so it was the only person that voted against it.
Voted against what, Matt?
The, what, voting on the land side as proposed.
Where, where was that? I'm confused.
At town meeting.
So only one person at town meeting voted against the whole harbor project?
No, against the, the land side project.
So the vote was three hundred and seventy-nine to one?
Yes.
I don't think so.
Ask the moderator.
Anyhow, having said that, in, in, in full disclosure, I was in, I was on the harbor committee, too, and I love the idea of a Snack Shack, I'm just, my, my concern is the hundred-seat restaurant.
The problem with the Snack Shack is the people want the town to build the Snack Shack, and we don't have the money.
I can understand that.
And we'd have to build a separate septic, a separate septic system now, and we don't have the money.
Okay, all right, that...
I think what we're kinda, at least what I'd like to kind of get a sense from, from you guys is, we had a discussion with staff, staff indicated parking, septic, so they, they've given us some feedback in terms of that. What, what concerns do you guys see from a reuse standpoint that I should think about putting into an RFP and make sure that we try to get that addressed?
I would think, if, if you're going to put an RFP in, from, from my point of view, a thirty-year lease is good. When you go to mortgage it, unless somebody's got awfully deep pockets, when you go to mortgage it, they like a little more than that, so Fennel Hall and the Navy Yard in Boston are on that type of leased land, and they'll lease it ninety-nine years.
Ninety-nine.
They're, they're ninety-nine-year leases, but, and there's a lot of kickers put in there, so that anytime something goes wrong, the BRA is the winner. So, you know, every time it's refinanced, it's fifteen percent. You know, every time the CPI goes up, so doesn't the lease. It's meant to make money for, it's meant to make money for the town.
Where did the number one hundred come from?
From the applicants. They said that they need a hundred seat to make them, make it work for a seasonal business.
So whether they've done a market study or not, you don't know, but that, that's their suggestion.
That's one of the questions I'm trying to avoid, I think they have, but I don't want to ask them yes and no, because then I become involved.
Anybody else have any, this is just an informal meeting, so Michael, speak up.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I just kind of voiced my opinion as one board member. I, I truly believe that the cart is being put before the horse here. This hasn't been even approved to bring to anyone for, to, before planning board, before the department heads and community development, before anybody. The Board of Selectmen hasn't discussed whether or not it wants to lease part of its harbor to anybody in a public-private partnership. The only thing that Matt said his town meeting voted to have a Snack Shack, that is correct. They didn't go into budget on that, they lost that, so this is an entirely new proposal that's being, that support is being sought prior to it going through the proper channels, which would be the Board of Selectmen deciding that they want to do it. Now, Matt's here representing, I'm not sure who. He said it's the town in the beginning of this. The letter that was sent to him was by some folks that want to lease the property, and I assume that it was sent to him, 'cause he's the chair of the Waterways Committee. He's not representing the Waterways Committee, 'cause I don't believe the Waterways Committee took a vote to ask Matt to come to the planning board or community development or anything else. So unless Chris Clark is having Matt do this, this is circumventing, starting with the people that are gonna lease this land, and quite frankly, sitting here before the planning board, throwing votes out that aren't true, because it wasn't three hundred and seventy-nine to one. Maybe one person spoke in opposition of it, 'cause he happens to own a restaurant that abuts this parking lot. Maybe one person. I can name a second, 'cause Leo Cocoonis stood up and talked about it, and I can name a third that voted against it, 'cause I did. So I'm not sure where this information's coming from, I'm not sure who Matt represents, but I think it's completely inappropriate. That's all.
Okay. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, based on the comments from the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I would recommend that we defer this discussion until there's been a discussion with the Board of Selectmen.
Fair enough.
Sounds fair to me. Everybody in agreement with that? We're not voting on it? Everybody's in agreement?
Yep.
Yep. I just wanted to put two things on the record before we end this discussion, is that, one, the planning board approved the Snack Shack when it came in front of you, so I just want to put that out there, and then, two, I just want to confirm that Mr. McCarlin recused himself from this discussion on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Music stopped, get up.
You're booting him. Get out my seat.
Okay.
It's a fun first meeting.
We are, reached a point in the agenda where it's all business.
Minutes.
Oh, minutes. Minutes for eleven, fourteen, seventeen.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
It's been moved seconded and thirded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's be unanimous, okay? Moving on to all business.
We have two meetings scheduled, one for January 4th and one for January 11. We are leaving the option open if we can't come to agreements with regard to what applications should be approved and what applications fit within the available funding, that we would then have additional meetings in January in order to try to come to a decision within a timely manner to meet the deadline to have warrants developed for town meeting Monday. If any of you have, do any of you have any questions?
I do.
How many applications do you have?
We have 16 applications.
16?
16. I think the total amount requested is way in excess of 3 million. My recollection is we have something like 2.6 million or something available. So we're not going to be able to approve all the applications that have been submitted. But we will be going through that process during the month of January. Any other questions on CPC? Ally?
Sorry, I just have a quick question. Are you going to, is CPC going to let all the applicants know when they're going to be discussing each application to make a determination?
Well, we're going to be discussing them as a unit.
Okay, so we just have to go?
So the intent, at least as of now, and we'll probably have further discussion on this after we review the other two applications on Thursday night, I think the intent is to have a discussion that could involve discussion of all 16 applications at each of those two meetings. Because I think we have to sort of think through how best we make the determinations and how best we allocate the available funding, which I think needs to be a balancing of all applications.
Has anybody provided you with the final capital outlay budget, basically is what it is?
Now, the final, Chris has provided us with the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So on there, it...
Yeah.
And on there, it indicates where at least we think CPC should be paying for it.
Yes, and that has been provided to us.
Okay.
And we've taken a look at it.
Close Thursdays.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions on CPC?
How much money do you have?
We have, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sharon, but I think it's about 2.6 million?
2.7 million.
2.7. I always forget the hundred thousand. But we're also in the process of taking a look at funds from previous awards that have not been spent.
Sitting in budgets.
To see whether or not any of that can be returned and therefore added to the available funding. So we're also going through that type of exercise. Okay, if nobody has any other questions?
Mary, do you have any?
I don't, I'll be joining him on Thursday night.
Yes. Now, the other thing I wanted to report on is the Comprehensive Planning Subcommittee of this board held its first meeting last week.
Which Ally announced her... Her patra.
And the main reason we wanted, the main purpose of that meeting was to get Ally's input into the process before she crossed the line, which we did get that, and we thank Ally for that input. Unfortunately, Larry is going to be out of town during a large part of January, so we will be scheduling a second meeting sometime after Larry returns, probably like in sometime in February.
Yeah, last week of January, yeah.
The last week of January, in which case, I, we're going to try to get David Spitz to come in and get his input into, and his thoughts on that. And also, we're going to begin to discuss the process of developing the plan and potentially the structure of the plan. Any, Charlene?
Be busy in January anyway.
Just as a point of information, within the capital plan, the seven-year capital plan, the funding that Ally put in for this project is not in until 2020. It's not in 19, it's in 2020. So you've got...
Thank you very much.
You've got a year and a half, actually two years.
We could go to three. At this rate, we'll be to our third planner.
Can you stay, can you stay there for a minute?
Yes, sir.
Have you been officially appointed as the acting planner?
I've been appointed as the interim planner, yes.
Thank you.
And having said that, there's no further reports, but before we close the meeting, I would like to thank Ally for...
I'd like to say something too before you...
I'd like to thank you, because you came in and I think you did, obviously, not only did you, I think you did a great job, but Chatham seems to too.
And I will second that, and I think we also give Ally a round of applause.
Oh, my gosh.
And I told Ally that if she ever needs a recommendation, I'd be delighted to do it, and I'm sure anybody would.
Thank you all.
So good luck in Chatham, and, you know, anytime you're doing nothing on the Tuesday nights, you can drop by.
I would just like to say that, oh, my gosh, that working with you all really is my favorite part of the job, and I just want to say thank you very much. I will miss you all.
Good job. And good luck in your new endeavor.
Thank you.
And I'm sure Charlene will help you out anytime you need her.
She's gonna, yeah.
Having said that...
She knows it too.
You can always meet us for lunch or dinner.
That's true.
You know, you know where to find us after our Tuesday night meeting. And being that you have Tuesday night meetings too, the timing works so perfect.
Having said that...
Most meetings adjourned.
It's been moved and seconded that the meeting be adjourned. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Aye.
Aye.